We're good?
PPS.
Okay, let's call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. All members of council are present with the exception of councillor Polling who is excused. Approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion? So who? Hearing a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, I do have a presentation I was going to do during public comments. There's a young man.
Um. I guess. It said, uh. Year of service. Started as a foreman for seven months. Became a foreman. Three years later. Sergeant. Four years later. Ten at the two thousand six. Up to Zach became Police Chief. August of twenty thirteen. And became our police chief. October sixteen twenty four. May thirteen twenty. Trying to recite my, the. Service work. Something I believe is called. And. Greatly appreciated. I know what I'm like. For. But all. Appreciation for this. Dedication to her.
Hey, you want?
Thanks, Norm.
Thank you, Norm.
Thank you, Norm.
Well, thank you, Norm. All right. Next item, consent agenda. November first, two thousand two one. Council work session minutes and November one, twenty twenty one. City council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve?
Hearing a motion to approve by councillor President Gryson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Standing by councillor Lasowski. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Old business. Orders number eight nine seven. Amendments to. Amendments to municipal code chapter two point zero four, council meetings. This item is on, is coming back for second reading. Orders number eight nine seven amendments to the municipal code chapter two point zero four council meetings is on second reading. Is there any further discussion? There's already motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business. Keys Water Treatment Plant Filter Media Replacement Project Contract. Mr. Suakau here?
He's calling in. He is. Nine seven one two four six four zero one five is his number.
He has to click. Star six. R six on his phone.
Dave clicks star six on your phone.
Does that work?
Yes.
Welcome, Dave.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I was muted on your end. Perfect. So yeah, mayor and council tonight, we're seeking um. Your approval to enter into a contract for the replacement of the media for filters one and two at the Keys Treatment Plant. On November second, the Public Works Department received six bids for this work. Uh, ranging from a hundred and two thousand to two hundred and ninety nine thousand. Uh, Elk Mountain Construction was the lowest bid and that's who we're seeking the contract with. And uh, that's about it. I can answer any questions.
Any questions?
Uh, Dave, it's Joel. Uh, so uh, I, I, I've looked at the uh, the two, the two high best bids uh, from Elk Mountain and uh, Reimers. Uh, Elk Mountain, uh, on their website, looks like they're uh, in Colorado. Um, and that they mainly do uh, uh, really kind of cool houses uh, in their, in their, in their line of work. Whereas it looks like.
So actually. Well, to answer your question, Joel, there's two Elk Mountain. I did the same research. The one that we're contracting with is based out of Sandy, Oregon.
Oh, okay, okay. So I'm going, wow, this is gonna be a long commute.
I researched them myself and came across that same one.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions?
Mister Mayor?
Councillor Lasowski?
I move the council authorize city manager Reins to contract with Elk Mountain Construction for the completion of the Keys Water Treatment Plant Filter Media Replacement. Project as advertised for the amount of one hundred and two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Hearing a motion from councillor Lasowski. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from councillor President Gryson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dave. Next item.
Thank you.
City prosecutor contract. Uh, Mr. Button?
On October twenty twenty one, the city released RFP two thousand twenty one oh three for the city prosecutor position and received one application. That application was reviewed and scored and the applicant was interviewed. A positive result. And so um, we are here tonight to ask for approval to contract with ERK sign law practices for the city prosecutor position. A flat billing rate of five thousand dollars a month.
Any discuss, any questions?
Mister Mayor?
Councillor President Gryson?
Is this the rate that we currently pay?
No. It is.
Actually a little bit less.
Thank you.
On average.
It does come highly recommended. I did hear back from his uh, recommendations.
Okay.
And uh, Joel and I sat in on the uh, panel interview too.
How'd it go?
Good. Yeah, he's definitely qualified or is happy with the responses that we received. And of course, uh, city manager uh, Reins is present as was uh, Jill Her as well.
Oh, yeah, I, I think we're gonna get a good uh, uh, city attorney.
I agree.
Prosecutor.
Mister Mayor?
Councillor President?
I move that council authorize city manager Reins to enter into a contract with ERK sign. Law practice to provide city prosecutor services to the city of Scappus at a flat rate of five thousand dollars per month.
Hearing a motion by councillor President Gryson. Is there a second?
A second.
Standing by councillor McHugh. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number five, resolution number two seventeen, a resolution updating the city of Scappus contact information with Mission Square Retirement or. Empty Get Trust.
Bitch trust?
Yes, mayor and council, um, this is just a bit of housekeeping. So. This um, this speaks to the city. Uh, we offer a four fifty seven plan, which is, you know, the, the public employee equivalent of a four oh one K. Um, with this particular um, particular plan, we offer three different ones. They require um, a resolution updating. Who the plan coordinator is. You're required to have a plan coordinator by law and currently it lists Michael Sykes. And so in order to change that, we have to pass this resolution. So. Again, it's, it's more of a housekeeping item, but it's something that has to pass through you all. So it would just simply update the plan coordinator to me. Um, you know, this is important so that, you know, if someone, for instance, wants to retire, that, that final paperwork. That allows me to sign that. Um, if they want to have a loan against their plan, if they want to roll it over to another plan because they're leaving, that kind of thing, that's what this is um, required. So that would make me the plan coordinator, allow me to do that.
Ask me a question?
Yeah.
Said we have three different plan options that through all the same plan providers or three different providers?
Three different providers.
Is there deficiency or is that more so to have options as an employee?
No, I think it's more to have options, but I'd have to get, I'd have to get back to you on a more detailed answer for that.
Yeah, that's something to keep in mind.
Having.
And these are, this is the one that's a hundred percent employee funded, correct? Cause you know, cause we, we fund everyone's purse. So this is just if you want to save in addition to that.
Having dealt with that in the school district, uh, it's a similar kind of thing. You've got employees that want this one, employees that want that one, this one. So. You accommodate as best you can to uh, give what they want.
All right, do I have a motion?
Mister Mayor?
Councillor Huggin?
I move to approve, approve, approve resolution number twenty one dash seventeen.
Hearing a motion to approve resolution number twenty one seventeen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Standing by councillor Miller. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion on second meeting in December changed to December thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Manager Reins?
Yes, mayor and council. So um, obviously the third uh, Monday in December, I believe is the twentieth. We were just concerned with the proximity to Christmas. So. Because we do have a lot going on, we thought that perhaps just moving that second meeting to the thirteenth made the most sense if you all want to have a second meeting in December.
I'm in favor of that.
Okay.
Everyone's good with it?
Do you have a question though? So my understanding is the third would be, or January third, which will be our first meeting in January would be a holiday.
So, right now it would be, so January third, we'd all be in the office. It's the Friday before. So because the first is on a Saturday. It's the Friday, correct. Friday is what's counted as the holiday. Yes.
Thank you. I have no problems with moving it to the thirteenth.
Okay, it's been moved.
Great.
Good job.
Thanks.
All right. Announcements, information, calendar check. Our next city council meeting is on December sixth. That. The work session at six PM, city council meeting at seven. On the thirteenth of December, we have a city council meeting. With a uh, urban renewal agency meeting at six PM, city council meeting at seven PM. ED Economic Development Committee meeting is this Thursday at noon with parks meetings in the evening. And then on the sixteenth of December. Economic Development at noon, Parks and Rec at six. Holidays are coming up. Hope everyone enjoys the holidays. If you have time to help community club set up. Lighting system, please. Inquire, show up in the morning when they're gonna do it. I believe. It's coming up soon.
Yes, and I can't remember the date now off the top of my head. Is Dave still on? He would probably know.
Dave?
Yeah, the setup is on the nineteenth.
This Friday?
Friday.
Saturday.
Uh, whatever the nineteenth is. I believe it is Friday. Cause we're.
Okay, oh yeah, you're right. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Councillor Reins, you have anything?
Yes, I have a couple things. Uh, one is I wanted to pass these around. These are some renderings of the new um, public building. That's um, we started the wage study for the police department on the first. By about eight weeks. So what I'm hoping is that I'll have all that information back by January when you all uh, resume the conversation about the ARPA funding. So that's in, uh, that's the works. Um. I had a meeting uh, with councillor President uh, Gryson. To speak with the nine one one district. They've said they would join council for a work session on December sixth. So I'm still working on firming that up, but they did um, agree verbally during the meeting to come before you on the sixth. Um, on Saturday, I attended the dedication of the mural at the library. Um, turned out really, really nice. Uh, that looks great. Um, and then just as a reminder, the virtual Q and A session for the ports rail studies tomorrow at seven PM. And I forwarded the uh, information to you all actually just a couple hours ago. So you can log in if you're interested in, in listening to that. That.
Peter? Um, so I spoke with nine one one's attorney last Thursday about their public records request. They're using uh, Leonie Reeves. Um, for this because Barry Elser had a conflict. And she is going to work with the executive director to substantially reduce the amount of. Information they're seeking and have it more targeted. Um, so we had a very frank conversation about things and I think it, it went pretty well. Uh, the other thing that, there seems to be some confusion. So I thought I, so I verified what the case was so that I could clarify it for you and that's it. Um, councillor Miller is not suing the nine one one district. There seem to be people that believe that. Is suing the former. Director of the nine one one district who is no longer an employee of the nine one one district or affiliated with them in any respect. So. We've heard a couple of times that there's, because of pending litigation, something can't happen. And I, I think that there's. I, I don't know why that confusion exists, but um, I thought it would make sense to, I checked for Alex, um, and then after I verified that. Um, we thought it was important that you guys know exactly what's going on. So there isn't any current litigation with the nine one one district and any members of our city council.
Anything else?
Uh, I just have one announcement. Our annual food bank. Uh, fundraiser, Donut Day is gonna continue this year. Last year we didn't do it because of COVID. Um, so the last time we did it was in two thousand nineteen. It'll be Saturday, December eleventh from seven AM to eleven, eleven AM. And it'll be a drive through here at the PD. Um, so all monies that's raised will go to the food bank.
Uh, uh, chief, so is that, do we, do we drop off food money or what, what?
Yeah, you could drop off donations. You could buy Krispy Kreme donuts, which will be a dozen for, I believe, ten bucks. Um, and you can drop off food.
Councillor Miller?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate um, again, uh, the nine one one issue too. I, I hope that we can get that back in front of council and revisit that and open. You know, continue the conversation on that. Um, there's also something else that I want to clarify too, and I appreciate the clarification that the city attorney offered too, because that is, he is accurate in that statement. I don't know why that came up. Um, and even if that was an accurate statement, nobody's looking to talk about the litigation. We're looking at trying to solve a safety issue here. Um, but I also want to point out too that nine one one does not have any responsibility to provide us a radio system. They've taken that obligation on themselves. And I want to um, go back to twenty nineteen with the executive director that was there where he was asked under oath, um, what do you think the core nine one one mission is, or the core mission is of their nine one one district? And he said the core mission is, and what it's funded for, is answering nine one one calls from citizens. Its funding is based on that job task. And the mission at the core level is to answer the nine one one calls. There is no statutory requirement to dispatch officers.
And.
And then it says, uh, there's no, there's no statutory requirement for them to provide a radio system either. So I just want to be clear that. We're not assume, we wouldn't be assuming their job. I, I think it's more of our responsibility as a city to ensure that our officers have a reliable radio system, but they don't have, they're, they're saying right here on the record that. Uh, per the ORS, they are only required to answer nine one one calls. I know that sounds absurd, because you would answer them and then do what with them, but that's what they're saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor President?
Um. Councillor Miller was nice enough to send me some pictures from Saturday's event. Unfortunately, I was out of town, but the mural looks great up by the library and celebrating the library. So thank you, Alex and Tyler for being there. I, I think that was. All who attended. Okay. Um.
Okay. Joel?
Joel, sorry. Great. Um, thank you for being there. Um. As Alex had mentioned, we met with uh, Mike Fletcher and uh, we found it to be the best for this voting body and for their organization that they come in front of us and. Tell us their side and their piece, and I'm looking forward to them coming to the table with us. Um. Thank you, Mister Mayor, for presenting that plaque to our former chief. Um, whoever things end, he, he did dedicate. His full self to this city. So I think that was very important that we acknowledge him. I have.
Councillor Huggin?
Um, just two uh, two short things. Uh, first, I, I hope that the city will send a thank you to Tumblewheel Studios for their magnificent work uh, on the, on the mural. Um, and you know, we want to keep cultivating and promoting that kind of uh, citizen involvement. So that, that was really, uh, I'm, I'm just tickled with that. But, and then uh, Pete and I uh, this morning uh, met up with Sheriff Pixley. Uh, based on a proposal that he'd, he'd sent uh, regarding potential for contract policing in, in Scappus. Um, and both Pete and I, I believe both Pete and I felt that this is worth examining, especially at this juncture in time. When we're, when we're in, when they were in the chief process, you know, this might be a good time to, to do a timeout. Uh, you know, and, and look at and actually dive into uh, communities where this has worked successfully. Um, you know, there, there are, there's quite a few of them uh, in, in Oregon and a lot more in California. Uh, so uh, this might be worth exploring, you know, and given on, you know, the, the money savings, uh. The uh, the lack of the much uh, much lower turnover on employees. Uh, uh, more resources, better coverage. Uh, and it takes a huge monkey off the city manager's back, from what I can tell. So I really think this is worth exploring at this particular juncture and maybe have a work session sooner than later uh, to, to examine this and dive into it. Uh, that's it.
Councillor Lasowski?
Uh, first I'd like to start off by uh, echoing councillor President uh, Gryson's sentiments and the mayor's recognition of uh. Or Miller's service to our community. Uh, greatly appreciated and um, well recognized. Uh, second, I had the opportunity to attend the League of Oregon Cities Region One Small Cities Meeting. Um, just a quick brief recap, a lot of uh, conversation around infrastructure, especially with the new federal. Bill that was being passed. And so um, there, I think as a community wide or a region wide, we're looking at opportunities to utilize those funds to best improve. Economic development, but also meet our community needs. Um. I'd also like to recognize that we had daylight savings recently and so driving safely on our roads and uh, keeping our eyes out for one another and uh, being uh, I think. courteous to one another on the, on the highway and on the roads throughout our community is uh, imperative for us to have safe streets. So I ask people to be diligent and recognize those needs. So, thank you.
Councillor McHugh?
First of all, I'd like to second what Joel said. Uh, it just made a lot of sense to. Contract with the sheriff's department to do what we're doing right now. And we would get more services. Uh, we would also uh. Wouldn't have to worry about whether we had twenty four seven coverage on things and uh, it would be. Be, it'd be doing a disservice to our community and our citizens if we didn't at least take a look at it. And uh, so that's, that's my take on it. I'm not sure how that, we go about that logistically, but I do think it's important that we at least address the issue. Uh, then I'd also second what everybody said about Norm. I've known Norm a long time. I know he's a really good man and I think he's done great service for this community. And I would just like to second what others have already said that uh, Norm is appreciated and uh, and I. Just wanted to say thank you to him. He's not here, but the same thank you. Uh, also one other thing, uh, two other things. One is Scappus Bagels, just, we know it's one of our businesses here in town. They did a. Wonderful job uh, on Veterans Day of recognizing the veterans. Uh, and they had, I don't know exactly what it was they were doing. I just happened to be there, you know, you know, accidentally almost, but. Yeah, free bagel. Yeah, free bagel. But they were, you know, almost literally lined up and uh, they had the staff there to do it. They were really, really busy, you know, but they were making, they're making it work and uh, the veterans, I think, felt, felt honored by what they were doing. So. Kudos to Scappus Bagel. And lastly, uh, regarding Scappus being such a wealthy city, uh, I don't disagree with what Peter has said. But I do know that for a long time, Scappus has been listed as one of the wealthiest cities in the state. Not just this year, last year, you, it goes back twenty years. We were sixth, I can remember. Many, many years ago. And I couldn't believe it. I still have a hard time believing it, to be honest, you know, but it, the demographics they use, there's two different groups to do that. One is the uh. Home snacks and the other one is uh, Visit Oregon. And uh, and home snacks gave us third wealthiest. And uh, and the tenth safest. And uh, Visit Oregon, the seventh wealthiest and the thirteenth safest. Now, they do, I did look on what they consider. They consider. The median income, which is depending household income, that's supposed to individual income, you'll get two different figures. Uh, but it's like eighty nine thousand, which is. You know, among the highest. They rated seventy six cities in Oregon over five thousand. So there is some credibility to that. Now, I do understand that probably the biggest reason we're a wealthy city is that we don't have very many poor people. And I really, I mean, that you gotta think, but you, there's, there's a, a balance there. And, and uh, and we just don't have, unfortunately, in some, in some ways, I would say. We, we don't have a strong demographic in that area. But I do think that uh, and that's one of the reasons why we weren't able to get grants sometimes when we'd like to be able to get them. And we think it's not fair that we're, but a lot of those are based on that. And the other, the, the other criteria is that uh, they. Go on the uh. Medium income or the, the unemployment rate and the poverty rate, those three things. And in the unemployment rate and the poverty rate, we scored really high. And that kind of offsets some other things, but. Our medium income household is very, very high. And it's not the highest by any means, but it's, it's one of, it's, it's much higher than average. And so I just wanted to throw that out there. The Robbie wasn't completely, you know, bananas when he said that you were one of the wealthiest city. There is some data to support that. His real point was, he was speaking to, to the city and the school district really, and maybe in some ways more the school district in some regard. But we just got to have a vision, identify what we need and figure out how to get them. And uh, uh, you know, it's kind of a simple process, but. That's how I see it anyway. Uh, and I know we have a vision for the city, uh, and, but I'm just saying, I think we want to have an attitude. How we can do things, not how we can't do them. You know, if we want to, we want to think positive. If there's a need, let's figure out a way to, to fill it. And I think some of the stimulus money that we'll be talking about down the line might be an answer to some of those, some of those issues. But anyway, that's my take on it. I just wanted to. Give Robbie a little bit of support, because Robbie uh, has done a lot of good things in the community already. He's a young man and he's on our economic development committee. And he understands economics. He has a degree from NYU in economics. So he's. Pretty good in that regard. Anyway, he's a good man to have on board and I want to support him.
Q Pete? So. I think that when, when we're talking about, the city of Scappus does have high median income. We don't have, and a lot of this is really because of measure five and forty nine and fifty. Whether you supported it or opposed it. When the city is funded based on property taxes. When measure five came in, here's. My favorite trivia question. There were two communities in the state of Oregon that were unaffected by ballot measure five. Scappus was one of them. Which meant that our tax rate was so low when measure five hit that we didn't. We didn't take any hits. And when forty seven, forty seven and fifty. Um, when it capped and then three percent growth, what happened is that these homes in the community. Assessed value is much lower than the current market value. So you have people that have money over the last twenty years, moving into this community, buying. Homes at a lot higher rate than the assessed value, because those don't reset on purchase. And so they're getting, so we're not. The city doesn't garner any additional money when a rich person moves in town unless they build a house or buy one of the new big homes.
Good play.
Correct.
And I mean, I think that's the point that Peter was making. Not that we don't have the wealth, it's that we don't have the mechanisms because of state law. To assess it. And I think the studies that people need to really think about is that for every residential home. Every dollar in taxes they pay, I think the studies show it's a dollar twenty five they demand in services. For every dollar an industrial site pays, they demand about sixty cents in services. If we want those nice things. We need Robbie on our economic development committee. We need to find a way to continue to develop our industrial land so that the city's. Hot of money expands without higher demand on it. And that's the key to the growth. I've been on this council for twenty years and, you know, I, I get what Robbie's saying, because when I ran for council the very first time. We had Heritage Park and a brand new skate park that ended up falling apart. It wasn't because the community didn't try on. It wasn't because the community didn't try on that skate park. But before that time, we really, literally, when the school district said the school district was, and Pete probably remembers this, the school district was our parks district. And I think it was the first or second budget, counselor named Gary Gardner and myself, brand-new the council, looked at the budget, knew we had the property on Miller Road, and just said, hey, we not going to be able to build a pool unless the community trusts us, that we can build a park, any park. We have a piece of property, our Parks Master Plan says neighborhood parks. We got the money in the S T C fund, let's build one to show the community we built one. We built that park. I think what people forget is that we only have thirty-some-odd staff members, but we can only do so much a year. I remember when we bought the property, the Veterans Park is sitting, I remember it came as part of, that's where the pool is going to go. I saw it as, that's where our big central park's going to go. And we built that park. We did it for one point six million dollars, and that was tightening the screws, making, you know, the National Guard came up, came out and did some work, you know. We did it the way a community that doesn't have it, have a lot of money as far as general fund dollars to do it, you know, and then we started acquiring property. We got Chapman Landing, we rebuilt the skate park, we redid Heritage Park, so it's beautiful. We we uh, I mean, we've recognized for twenty years that the new people moving here demand the services they used to have they were in Beaverton, Portland, before they moved out here, or any of the areas in L A. I grew up, when I was a kid in Westminster, California, remember the Parks District? That's when I ran, it's like, we have to have something like that. When the Parks District wanted to dissolve, I had them come before the council, begged them not to do it. And they said, no. I mean, but it, everything takes time, and it takes money, more money than we have. I agree, this money, when it came to the meters, I was supportive of it, because it, I looked at it as a way to use money and then re-double down on water resources that we need to do, as well as kind of tapping down on water rates a little bit for people. But also, you know, freeing up money in our water budget so that we can get more of those. We don't deliver water and take the sewer away, people are going to be a lot more angry at us than if they don't have a park. And that's the nice things that they really need. Parks are our luxury items that we're getting, we're, we're committed to getting. I've been saying it since forever, the parks, I'm committed to building more and more parks, and it's just, we have to do it within the budget we have. Every time we add a park, let's pressure on our, our general fund, because then we have to have more staff to take care of those parks. And if we don't have the general fund dollars to do it, guess where the money comes out of? Usually police departments. So you know, I like the energy and everything, it's just it's hard. Government budgets are complicated. It's not just like a pool of money. We can't just take water money and build it here. We can't take sewer money and throw it over there. But, you know, I just think that we uh the city's come a long ways in twenty years, where we actually have a park system. I mean, we've got Grabhorn, it's going to be built. We've still got the Vista View area uh property. We've got Chapman Landing. When I got on council, Crown Zollerback was rode there, but it was blocked off by logging gates. And those logging gates, we spent two thousand dollars to replace on this side, but the far ones are still the same two thousand dollars ones we replaced nineteen years ago. Why? Open it up, let's let people access it. They're already accessing, they're tearing up the mud. So it's, for me, always passionate about that, and it is a, for me, I'm a can-do, let's get it done. But it's also got to be within the funding. We go out and we get these grants the state offers, you know, the infrastructure stuff. I assume that our staff is going to have a whole list of grant opportunities for us to go after. There's going to be money there, and the frustrating thing is, is even though we're, because we don't have the industrial side and we're tax dollar poor, we still have a wealthy community who did vote to have a gas tax so that we could work on some of those projects on sidewalks. Those are some of the nice things we really need to start looking at as sidewalks and for parks, but you know, for the safety of the community. So I agree, it's just it takes time. And just always excited about making a better community, so. Thank you, Pete, for bringing it up. It's just.
You want to know who the wealthiest community is?
I believe it was Happy Valley or Westland.
One time it was, it's not now. This is the latest one. They do this. Thoroughwood.
That doesn't surprise me.
In Happy Valley. In us.
No way.
I, 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 I have.
Well, I mean, we remember that.
Lake Oswego.
Yeah, that doesn't mean that the city has a lot of money. Doesn't mean our budget is big.
I think that's because Tyler moved back into the city.
There we go. I think.
But yeah, no, I mean, but there's.
That we have a lot of money, you're absolutely right.
There's, 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 it does mean that there's opportunities for the city to do things within, work with people, but you have to remember, a lot of these people are working, are your Intels, your Nikes, working at these businesses and commuting out here because lower cost of housing, better, a better place to live than the Portland metro area. So they want this kind, you know, they want something like this, not hustle and bustle. We just have to figure out how we provide jobs here that create that same wealth for people living here, as well as creating monies for the city. That's the most, you know, I mean, that, and that's our interest, and that's expand the economy, and the best way for us to do it is the industrial section. Thank you. All right, seeing nothing else, meeting adjourned.